Using the Think Gate program. We want to share the data openly with members of the team. There's no hiding of data. We share it. We talk about it, you know, why is so and so doing better and such and such? And figure out how we can improve on that. We seek best practices, build on each other's strengths and weaknesses, and just take a genuine interest in contributing to each other's successes. It's got to be a belief in learning by doing. Got to have that capacity building that Dr. Matthews talks about a lot throughout the district and throughout the schools. It's got to become a habit. It's got to become a daily thing. When you walk into a school, you'll know if professional learning is going on. You can tell just by the atmosphere, by the way people are talking, by what's going on in the classrooms during planning time. Again, we talked about common assessments, and the one thing I stress about this is, why have any other type of assessment if you're going to have a professional learning community? It doesn't make sense to do everything required of a professional learning community in terms of collaboration, working together, and then everybody goes off and does their own assessments. So, common assessments just seems to make sense. And, of course, we always want to assess for student learning. From good to great, Jim Collins states, "Greatness is not a matter of circumstance. Greatness, it turns out, is a matter of conscious choice and having some discipline." Where are we in the process in Indian Creek? Well, as a staff, they receive professional learning communities pre-planning, and we talked about that sheet that I showed you earlier. We've tried to provide a definition and all sorts of ingredients that go into PLCs and what our PLCs made of, what drives them, what keeps them going. They completed a PLC team reflection sheet with their grade levels at the beginning of the year and a SMART goal sheet that we talked about, and we got feedback from Mulligan in his talks about PLCs and how PLCs are successful. And again, as I talked about earlier, we maintain minutes and agendas in our PLCs. We have team reflections, talking about common goals and practices. All the members of the group must participate fully to achieve these goals and objectives. And how quickly will these teachers get the assessment data in a usable format so they can go ahead and go to work on using that data successfully? More characteristics of PLCs. More talk about SMART goal and setting plans based on areas of strength and areas of focus. I think our, some of our areas of strength are similar to those. We have good collaboration going on. Our classrooms are well managed. We have a good team collaboration support, strong departments and participation by all. Some areas that we need to focus on are co-teaching, and I know several went through a co-teaching conference this summer to learn more about co-teaching, how it can be effective. We're still working on effectively using interactive notebooks, continue to improve our communication with parents and other community members, continue to work on the success of our students with disabilities, and continued use of creating FASTFives as a formative assessment for our schools. And for our content planning, every Monday and Wednesday, we require our teachers to meet, to discuss content at grade levels. Again, they have their agenda and minutes, and these are some of the things that they need to be talking about to help them focus. What knowledge and skills do they want their students to have? How will they know each student has acquired such knowledge and skills? How will they respond when the students aren't acquiring or not learning? And how will they, we respond when students have clearly achieved intended outcomes? I think sometimes we focus so much on bullet number three there, the ones who aren't getting it, the ones who aren't learning. We kind of sometimes forget about the ones that are learning, and we got to remember that it's important for them to be enriched and extend the activities for them as well so they don't become bored with the learning process. And again, more things we do as a staff. Every Tuesday, we have what we call professional learning, where we work on best practices and research-based instructional strategies and work on district-level initiatives as well. How do we know things are going on? Well, in our content planning, we have the minutes. We walk around during planning time to see that things are occurring. During our professional learning things, we give them assignments to do and ask that they apply those things that they're learning about best practices in their classrooms, and then we come back and we talk about what they've done. We do things through walkthroughs and observations.
One of the benchmark data just came out from Think Gate, and we were provided charts at our, at our secondary principals' meeting, and we had all of our charts and all of our test scores for each subject area and for each grade level. And I brought the charts and graphs back, and I shared it with each grade level, and I'm competitive, and I showed the charts and how our bar wasn't always the highest in every single area or in every grade, and we talked a little bit about that. We talked about, you know, what are some of the things that may have impacted the scores? What are they doing at some of the other schools that might be different from what we're doing? What are we doing well? And we, and we had all of the teachers in their content area, grade level groups, sit down and do a data analysis protocol, and this was something that we did after we did this presentation, so I knew that it was going to be moving forward. And the teachers looked at their standards, they looked at the results, they looked at the countywide results, they compared their classroom results to each other and to that. And I was really proud, as an administrator, to listen to their conversations when they were working in their groups. It's kind of like a teacher who has a great activity, and the kids are working and everyone's talking about the work. That's how I felt about our staff. They were looking at, you know, what did we do well? There was validation there. They were comparing, you know, the teacher's scores with each other. They were talking about the kids, but they decided, and this was something I asked them to do, what is your prescription? What is the RX for, for what we're going to do to help reteach some of these standards that we can see the kids didn't get? And so, they came up with a plan of action, a very short, simple, precise way to fix this, to reteach something, to go back and cover it again if they didn't have a chance to cover it. And that was something that we're going to do every time we get the results back from our benchmark. And with Think Gate this year, it's, the reports are great, so we're able to use those reports to compare our standards and to talk to each other and have really meaningful conversations. And that was something, I was listening to each group as they moved through that process. I was really proud of them. And this isn't, we don't make all this stuff up, so I brought samples, of course. You know, I have work samples, and I have the sheets where they filled them out or they, where they worked as professional learning communities and responded to certain things and, and talked about what their goals are and where they are. And so, this is something that, it's still a work in progress for us at Indian Creek, but we're getting better at actually making a change in our instruction based on our results. So, thank you.
Renee, I'd like to follow up and then give it to the board, of course, but I'd like for our board members to know that this, this work is really some of the most important work that this school system is doing right now. What you saw tonight is going on across our schools. There are some differences. They're subtle, but the main points you heard made here tonight are the points that other principals would make if they were here. This is serious work. This is work that will transcend any board, any superintendent. That will be going on long after all of us are gone. It's that powerful, and it's that meaningful to the people who are doing it. Now, imagine Indian Creek, this case study tonight. Two years, they've had to make AYP with very high annual measurable objectives. In other words, a very high percentage of kids having to pass across each of the subgroups. They've done that in the last two-year period, and Renee will tell you that professional learning communities is one of the reasons they think they've gotten there. So, imagine a teacher who wants to do their own thing and by themselves in their classroom with no one watching, with no one helping them plan, with no one creating common assessments along with them, and no one giving feedback as to how well his or her kids are doing. That teacher is not particularly comfortable in the PLC environment. But the good news is, and I think the real news is, increasingly more of our people are getting comfortable with that professional work, that collaborative collegial work that is truly a professional learning community. And it requires the perspective that says, "I need to learn from Renee and from Jim and from Dennis and from Samantha and Ken about how they're doing things to get kids to learn this concept, and in my class, I just don't seem to be able to get done." So, learning from others is critical in this profession, unlike doctors learning from doctors or lawyers from lawyers. So, this work is really, really powerful. The last thing I would say, if you, if you were to set through the elementary principal evaluations which are going on now this month, given that we have all the official data in, and secondary begins here shortly, I think tomorrow in fact, and hear our principals speak to what they're doing in their PLCs, you couldn't help but be impressed. They're doing serious-minded work for kids, getting it down to the individual kid level, and that's the only way ultimately with increased accountability that we're going to move forward as a school system and have kids learn what others expect. With that, Mr. Chairman, it's all yours.
Any questions or comments from, you know, the board members?
Yes, I have one. Help me with this one, Dr. Matthews. Is there a greater need, do you think, in the PLC environment to engage additional co-teaching?
I think co-teaching is very important because you have two adults in the classroom that are both responsible and accountable for the students' learning in that classroom. And it's a process because sometimes each year you have to start over because you get a new co-teaching partner, or you're in an area that's not your, your strongest subject area. So, I think that working together as a co-teaching team is an important component of a PLC. When we looked at our data, we had our special ed teachers right there with their partners going over the kids' test results. They belong to all of them, and I think it's important, but I do think that we do need some more professional learning community and that emphasis on co-teaching and some more support because it's, it's a struggle sometimes to, you want to be great, but it takes a lot of work to get there, and the teachers are constantly working at it.
One other comment. You said you needed support, and that's why I asked that question. Do you see, you need it. You say you need support. Do you have the control to say what segment would be co-teaching or not? You have the flexibility?
We, there's some control because we can look at which teachers would like to co-teach, so that's important, you know, who is willing to share their classroom with someone else. We look at personalities, so the administrators do have a little bit of control, but sometimes you are driven by what the student's IEP says, and it says, "My child needs three segments of co-teaching," and you're spreading these bodies out, you know, amongst the, the school. And, you know, sometimes some of the support comes in, you know, sometimes we need more people, and sometimes we need to be better at, at scheduling our students so they can get what they need without reducing our funds. That doesn't really answer your question, but...
No, I, I, I'm intrigued by you saying that you need support. That's why, one of the reasons I'm sitting here, I want to support you in this effort. How do I do that? Can you help me? What do you, and I ask, do you have the flexibility to get co-teaching if they're needed?
There's, there's a couple of things with, there's a lot of things I could talk about right now. One of the things is that you probably are aware that our special ed director, Dr. West, is working with our teachers and with our departments to really make sure that we are not over-servicing our students so that we're actually handicapping them in a way. So, there's been a push towards looking at, yes, we want to make sure these kids get everything that they need, but if we give them too much, suddenly we're losing FTE dollars. And, and when you lose money, suddenly you're losing bodies and people that can actually do certain things with your students. So, there's the, the monetary component, but I think a lot of it is just getting teachers to understand, first of all, making sure that you're providing what the kids need, but recognizing that if you give them too much, you're shooting yourself in the foot. And then the second part is, is helping teachers understand that we really are working towards the same goal, which is what's in the best interest of the child. And sometimes when your resources are reduced, you can't give them what you want because you just only have so many teachers on your allotment sheet. And I think support-wise, it's that continual, if your focus is on co-teaching, like for us with, after the co-teaching workshop, all of our co-teachers on the staff have three observations, whether they're special ed or regular ed. So, they know that we're going to be coming in, they know that we're going to be looking at what model they're using. So, there's, for us as administrators, that's supporting the teachers because we're also letting them know that we're going to, we're going to meet with them and talk to them about what we expect and what we're looking for and, and help them become better co-teachers and better team members. So, there's always a need for support.
Thank you very much. You know, other comments from any of the board members? Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Matthews, I guess maybe since we're talking about this, I think it'd probably be good to, for you to expound on why some of the schools didn't make AYP. There's a lot of emphasis that's been placed on the fact that they were, the reason they didn't was because of academics. And if you would, just explain to them, the ones that didn't make AYP, why they didn't.
Well, under the federal law, No Child Left Behind, the various subgroups, black, white, Hispanic, English, as the second language learners, students with disabilities and the like, are expected to hit what the feds call an annual measurable objective. And since No Child Left Behind, with the ultimate goal that 100% of our students in each of the subgroups make AYP, since its inception back in 2002, I believe, every year, each of the states have raised the passing percentage for a school to be deemed or a system to be deemed earning AYP. So, for example, if last year in English Language Arts, the annual measurable objective was, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but say, and it's, this is approximately right, I believe, 86, 87% of your students passing the test in order to earn AYP in each of the subgroups, then you're confronted the next year with 90% of the students having to pass, say, in English Language Arts to make AYP. So, there's been an ongoing year after year since the inception of No Child Left Behind, an escalating passing percentage that students have to hit, that schools have to hit, systems have to hit in order to be deemed AYP. So, it's a moving target, and the target is upwards in terms of the percent that has to pass. So, for students, for schools and school systems that do not make AYP in any given year, what's happened is, rather than 87% of their students hitting AYP, which they may have hit one year, the next year, 90% is the standard, and maybe they improved even. Maybe they got to 89% and improved over the prior year, but they didn't hit 90. And right now, nationally, I think what you would read in the national press, what you would hear from school superintendents, principals, and teachers, is that No Child Left Behind now really has kind of hit a ceiling. And when you start expecting each of those different subgroups to hit 90%, much less 100% ultimately, of the kids passing any given test on any given one day, you're expecting what has, some have said, what has never been done across the country, across states, across school districts, 100% of each of those groups learning or passing a test, several tests, on a single day. So, perhaps it's outlived its usefulness despite its noble goals of every kid passing No Child Left Behind, in other words. And, and I think one of the downsides is, and I think parents need to remember this, educators too, educators can tell you, education has to be more than that multiple-choice test that No Child Left Behind has represented now for so many years. So, even as we hit that ceiling, and I think we pretty much have hit that ceiling now in Newton County and elsewhere, we have to realize that even with good numbers, it's regarding a test on a single day, it's multiple-choice, kids choosing from a menu, and that has had the impact in many places of reducing the curriculum to sort of almost rote multiple-choice guests from a menu, if you will, in terms of teaching and learning. So, what the federal government now is supporting is a broader analysis of how well schools and school districts are doing on multiple measures, not just a single test on a single day, including that, but also many other factors like SAT, ACT, advanced placement, which is college-level enrollment and work, dual enrollment, the same thing. So, they're going to start looking at multiple measures, and hopefully, when the new assessments come out, to one of the points I need to make tonight, when the new assessments come out with the common core state standards, they will ask students to do more than just pick the right answer from A, B, C, D. And they will ask kids to write with fluency and comprehension. They'll have kids do various performance tasks, be it in science or what have you, and they'll have kids perhaps even on a computer put forth certain aspects of, of solving problems or conducting some project right there computerized, be it in social studies or what have you. One of the points to be made, however, is that would be a very expensive proposition, that is, that kind of assessment that takes us beyond just a multiple-choice test. So, I think we have to understand what AYP is and what it isn't. It is about a very high ceiling now, pretty much to the 90s right now for every subgroup, if you will. And it isn't about the kind of learning that necessarily translates into college readiness and the kinds of things Georgia and the federal government will now begin to look at and hold schools and systems accountable. Newton County's done well over the years in, in terms of AYP and the Georgia assessments, making AYP most, more times than not. The last two years, we've pretty much hit that ceiling. And I suspect for the current year, the state will probably hold us harmless in terms of our AYP status. In fact, that's kind of what we're hearing now emerge and trickle out of the Georgia Department of Education, hold us harmless. This year, meaning our current status, and then the following year begin to assess us on these multiple, more sophisticated measures, they say, for AYP purposes. So, Mr. Turner, I'm not sure I answered your question. I sure said a lot, but this is not, this is not a simple topic. It's a complex topic. But our schools certainly did meet the predictions that were made for the number of schools not making AYP for last year. And last year, using the federal model to predict AYP, they predicted 19 Newton County schools would not make AYP. Instead, seven was the number. We substantially beat those predictions, and we improved in 76% of the instances, elementary, middle, and high school. That's pretty good, and it's not easy to do when your standards are way high as they are now in No Child Left Behind. So, the district made lots of progress. What we need to do now is take another step and see what we can do on more sophisticated college readiness standards. But I've been asked by various people, how do the feds make that prediction on how many schools will make AYP or not? It's very simple. They take whatever your performance is for a given school year, and then they project one year out, given the new annual measurable objectives. Remember earlier I said the, the number of kids, the percent passing each year grows. Every year, it gets more and more, a higher, higher number that have to pass in order to make AYP. So, they take your current year of performance and the next year's annual measurable objective and place those passing percentages on top of your current performance. And they say, if there's no change in performance in this school district, you perform exactly this way next year under new, higher standards, then they begin to predict how many schools will not make AYP. So, they do it that way year after year. That's why the, and, that's why the U.S. Secretary of Education predicted some 83% of the nation's schools would not make AYP based on the model I just described. Instead, it was 60-something percent, still a high number, but not 80-something. So, not only did the nation do better in that regard, beat the prediction, so did, so did this, this county. So, if that makes any sense, that's kind of where it's at.
I guess the reason I wanted him to elaborate a little bit on that because when I first heard those figures of 19 of our schools not making AYP, I just could not believe that could happen with the competent teachers and administrators that we have, that we will have 19 schools not to make AYP. And I just say that to, I appreciate, and I'm sure all the bussies speak for the rest of the board members as well, that we appreciate the efforts that you all put in educating our children. But I think it's sometimes we allow people to dictate us, to us, how we think we're going to perform, and it shows that nobody can tell us how Newton County School System's going to perform because we have dedicated teachers and administrators out here teaching our children. I appreciate, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board members here. Having said that, anybody comments, anything before we move on? Having none, old business, I'm sorry, enrollment?
Dr. Proctor. Mr. Chairman, currently, we have 19,200, 230 students enrolled in our schools. That was as of November 3rd. Last year at this same time, actually on November 4th, there were 19,384 for a difference of 154 students. So, we're up a few, I believe it was 18 students from last month's report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Old business or Dr. Proctor?
Yes, sir.
Items A, B, and C, I believe you have all three. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. These policies have been on the table since last month. To date, we've received no feedback or no comments related to these three policies, so we'll be bringing those to you next week for approval.
Any questions from the board members as it relates to items A, B, and C on the old business? Okay, we'll move to new business. Item A, Dr. Carpenter? You have item A and B.
Yes, sir. Item A, the superintendent recommends the acceptance of the architect's certificate of completion for the construction of Flint Hill Elementary School. And this is always important to us because we now believe the contractor has completed all that's required, and it's even more important because the states would hold in 10% of the monies that are due on this project until the board accepts such completion. So, you'll find the official documents there reflecting the completion and also the certificates stating that no asbestos-containing materials are found in the construction. Just for the board's benefit, the final contract for the construction of Flint Hill was $13,257,000, and of that, state participation was $4,955,169, leaving a local portion of $8,301,831 coming from our SPOLOX three distributions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Did we make the bid overrun?
Did we?
Were there any overruns?
No, we came in at budget.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, surplus items, and item B, the superintendent recommends declaring the items on the attached forms as no longer serviceable to the school system and authorizing appropriate disposal. And you'll see those items there coming from Mainstay Academy, the former Sharp Learning Center, Livingston Elementary School, and here at the BOE.
Okay, any questions as it relates to item D, please?
You know, Mr. Johnson, I have item B, but I have a different question with Dr. Carpenter since you've got the podium. The last year, we got approval, I think, was six buses.
Yes.
This year, I think it's about the same.
Three.
Three. My point is, and I know we reduced our fleet by 40, X 45 or so buses, and we were able to pick out, get rid of the antiques.
Yes, sir.
If we continue to get three or six buses, and we got a fleet of about 187, right? It's going to take us about 36 years to replenish our fleet.
That's the same thing Mike Bartels me every day. If it were up to him, we'd be replacing them at a rate of 10 or 20 per year. And, and that's a realistic problem, and it has to do with future capital funds as we might be looking at another SPOLOX down the road.
Okay, but how do we, we tackle this? I mean, this could be a problem four or five years from now, and I don't think we can wait that long to start developing some type of format to deal with.
We know how many buses it would take to, to get our fleet in terms of what you're talking about. The challenge, again, is always in dollars. So, we've attached some figures to that that we're going to be presenting to the school board at its work session in December as a part of our plans for our geo-bonds moving forward. I think the superintendent's provided you with some information about that meeting. So, those figures are there and available, and that's a point we'll have to talk through, but they do take into consideration our bus fleet.
And Dennis, let me mention that, since you, since you mentioned the December work session, and so staff are here, they may not have heard this, but in terms of the date, the date is December the 14th, 3 o'clock. It's a two-part agenda. The one is the analysis of our general obligation bonds, mileage analysis, that's one part of the agenda, and the other part is the future expansion of the Newton County theme school at Fekwitz. So, that's the two-part agenda for December 14th, 3 o'clock.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Item C, Dr. Proctor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I presented this item to you at the last meeting, your regular meeting, and we are requesting action on this item tonight so that we can enter into an agreement with the company Global Datebooks, who have provided our student agendas and handbooks for the past two years. They have agreed to provide those agendas and handbooks to us at the same rate at which they've given us for the past two years, and in addition to that, they're giving us a small... And in addition to that, they're giving us a small, whatever it is.
Discount.
Discount, that's a good word. Small discount of seven hundred and fifty dollars, although every little bit helps. So the district cost for this item will be approximately twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars from our local funds. And the school principals, as I mentioned before, pick up the other half of that from the money that's allotted to them, or they do it via their PTOs or other methods through which they get funding in their schools.
Okay. We need a motion to approve item C tonight. Motion by Mr. Meadows, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and Ms. Baker, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carried. Okay, thank you, Dr. Proctor. Item D, Ms. Berry?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. The superintendent recommends policy JQKA be adopted. This policy will be reviewed during the month of November, followed by a request for action in December. And policy JQKA references the foreign exchange students. The current board policy governing foreign exchange students does not explicitly address processes and procedures for students participating in foreign exchange programs who seek enrollment in the Newton County School System. The recommended policy sets forth administrative regulations, foreign exchange student requirements, and exchange agency requirements. The current policy is also embedded in policy JBA, which is enrollment, residency, and attendance. Upon approval of policy JQKA, we will make a recommendation to amend policy JBA and remove the language from that policy.
And we did this in concert with our principals and Attorney Hartley, is that correct?
Oh, yes. We, once Attorney Hartley helped us draft the policy, we compared surrounding district policies for those districts who have foreign exchange policies. Some districts don't have them, they don't have an interest in the exchange program. The foreign exchange programs don't have an interest in going into their school system, so they don't have those policies. We also, I also worked with the counseling staff, since they're, they're the ones who typically handle all of the paperwork associated with foreign exchange students. And they reviewed the policy and provided feedback. And then I went to the principals and assistant principals, they too provided feedback, so that we have a pretty strong policy that takes into consideration all of the information from all parties involved.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
On one, on section one E, I guess, it's under foreign exchange student requirement?
Yes.
Page two of four, from what this shows.
Yes.
Where it says that they will present the disciplinary, any records indicating disciplinary action. Does it give leeway as to how to respond to that? I mean, does it, does it spell out, I'm trying to recall, does it spell out the discretion the district has on whether or not we want you to come based on what the nature of that disciplinary act infraction was?
Well, I think that that sort of is embedded in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it should be as if any other student.
Correct.
Yes.
That's the way it should be, yeah.
Right.
Should be an exception.
There's not any, we tried to do, to keep very close to the knitting with this one
Right.
and definitely consider treating and expecting the same things from foreign exchange students as we do from any other student enrolling in the school system. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, or Dr. Shatter?
Dr. Matthews, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Item E refers to a contract for E-Rate consulting. The superintendent recommends approval of a contract with Manning Enterprises Incorporated, DBA K-12 consultants, to handle all E-Rate processes and applications for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. As background information, excuse me. The, I've done, or, and my predecessor has done the E-Rate program for the last, for thirteen years. And I think my track record in the last ten years has been fairly good, as you saw in the presentation I made earlier. However, the more I've studied this issue, I realized by talking to a lot of different people that we could actually increase our discount percentages by using a consultant because they use an alternative method of assessing the economic disadvantage to the numbers we have per school. And as a result, if you look at the track record of all the different consultants, they have increased the percentage of E-Rate discount. The Manning Enterprises, for example, had increased Fayette Counties by seven percent. Well, that's a significant percentage of how much money they're getting back for all the things they've applied for. So with that, I looked at several other E-Rate consultants, and all of them charged the same amount, ten percent. And so I took this to the attorney and had him look over the contract, and he made some suggestions. And it was basically wording suggestions, you know, changing the wording, et cetera. And then I took it to Ms. Bullard and had to make sure that it followed the Newton County guidelines for contracts. And she agrees that it did because we checked on other sources and found out the percentage is the same. So the superintendent recommends that you approve this contract.
Let me rephrase what you just said, please, for understanding. The consultant, on average, will increase the E-Rate funds by sixty-seven percent.
Yes, sir.
But the consultant's gonna charge ten percent.
Yes, sir.
There's a missing three percent somewhere, right?
Yes, sir. If you consider just the telecommunications cost and the internet access cost. But what happens is that if you move a school from an eighty percent category to a ninety percent category, then you are gaining a ten percent reduction plus eighty percent doesn't get funded, but ninety percent does. So you're, we're gonna get more renovative opportunities in the future as we need to by using a consultant that I could do that by myself.
Well, let me ask you this. You mentioned they have an alternative way of assessing the students.
Why couldn't we do that?
Is it a different criteria?
No, there's two criteria. You can use the standard free and reduced lunch statistics provided by the school nutrition program.
Right.
The alternative procedure is to survey all the parents. And so what these consultants do is they send out surveys to all the parents. And if you get at least a fifty percent response from the parents, you can use that data, and it is valid, it's been approved by E-Rate. I don't have the resources to do the survey, to do the survey and then calculate all the results.
Does E-Rate somehow monitor the authenticity of those surveys? I mean...
We keep them on file, so if they did go do an audit, we would have those on file to show them. But they have approved this method of determining the discount rate.
So if you do the option, there's no fee for that?
No, there's no fee for it. The only fee that we would be charged if the money was actually approved and then we accepted that approval from E-Rate. So we don't pay them anything upfront, we don't pay them anything for the surveys. We only pay them when money starts flowing back in from E-Rate.
And typically, that's more money for the school system?
Yes.
So that's something Peggy keeps track of, what's coming and going?
No, that's something I keep track of.
Okay.
Is this a growing trend, by the way, around school systems in the country?
Yes.
In past experience, we've used E-Rate consultants, and we, in our experience with us, we gained more money?
One other question I have. We used as someone to contact, which has failed. Was there any other system that's close to our size?
Fayette County is a little bit larger than us. Paulding County is approximately our size. All the others, and I have a list of them if you'd like to look at.
And I guess the reason I'm asking that question as well is because their tax base is a whole lot different than ours.
That is true. They're a much more affluent county than we are.
So my question is, would that have any variances on what kind of funds we would get based on?
Actually, because they're more affluent, it's more difficult to raise the discount level because of our economic disadvantage or economic stress that we're under as a county. We should be able to receive a lot higher discount rate. So I'm looking at a minimum of seven percent, it could go even higher than that.
Seven percent?
Higher discount rate. Right now, our county discount rate is seventy-nine percent. So I'm looking to get in the mid to high eighties.
So this year was the year, I don't want to dwell in the past, but this year was the year that those dollars, if so chosen by the system, could go into the general fund, right?
Correct.
But that's not true going forward always, right?
Yes, that is true.
It is true?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so it could, it could boost general fund dollars?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
There's no stipulation on how this money is to be spent
Okay.
when it comes to telecommunications costs.
I think what was this year, there was something you brought up at the special meeting. This year was the year that they were allowing something that...
All schools to be funded.
Right.
No matter what their discount rate was. And I've never seen that, they've never done that before, and the likelihood of it happening within the next decade is very slim.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Shatter.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Item F, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this time we'll ask the board to approve the personnel report as outlined on behalf of your superintendent during executive session.
Can I get a motion to approve item F, please?
They're moved.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and Ms. Baker, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries. Other matters of interest?
I have some. I always like to tell you guys when I see things passing through the school system that we see up here and present. So I want to talk about, real quick, the interactive notebook. So we've heard a lot about that, and I know there were some presentations this summer given to the teachers on how to get the interactive notebook in your classroom. And my youngest child, Sarai, who's in Quest, she has an interactive notebook, and she's in first grade. And I just want to talk about it really quick. It is very organized for a first grader, extremely organized. And it makes me proud to see a first grader doing that type of organization. She had some vocabulary words, and I was trying to put it in her notebook just to show you the organization. And she was like, no, mommy, I don't want it in that tab, I want it this tab. So, you know, so it's really good, it teaches the kids to be creative and for them to take some autonomy and ownership of how they want to organize and how they kind of direct their own learnings. She writes the notes in her own little learning fashion and stuff. So I think that's really great for a first grader, so kudos for that. Also, I attended one of the Title I, parent involvement meetings. I went to one at Clement's, just stopped by, and it was a math meeting. And I forgot the teacher's name, and I wrote it down, but I didn't bring my notebook. But it was very good. I was disappointed they didn't have a lot of parents turn out for that one. But, yeah, it was, you know, I was disappointed in that. But it was really, really good and very hands-on. They showed the teachers, I mean, the parents, how to use Study Island, and how to use Infinite Campus, and how they could track their kids' grades and tests and stuff like that. So I hope more parents start attending these meetings that they have. So that was very good. And then it was one more thing I wanted to mention, but I forgot, and I was trying to write my little notes down. Well, I guess I have to save it for next week. But on Thursday night, and we really don't have anybody except for school system people, but I am having a public forum on Thursday night for people in District Three. And it's a joint forum with Nancy Schultz, who is the county commissioner representative for District Three. And it's in the heart or the center of our district because we have the largest populated district in the county as of now. So, but, so, and I will let you guys know how that goes. So we're gonna do some Q and A. I'm gonna talk about some of the things that the school system has implemented that I'm really proud of. And so, and I just appreciate all the work that you guys do, so. That's it. Oh, and Al Kobe, don't forget about, they have a game. I mean, they lost their, you know. Okay, well, okay, I'll continue to talk then. Al Kobe has, I guess, another shot in the play, is it the playoffs? It's been a long night, thank you. But anyway, it's Saturday, so you guys go out and support Al Kobe High School. Newton just did miss it, so, you know, you said it wasn't clear. But I will, another one bites the dust.
Any other comments from any other board members?
Is it Friday?
Big pardon?
I was asking her if it's Friday, she said it's Saturday.
Oh, it is Friday, huh?
It is.
It's Friday, I'm sorry.
It's eleven eleven, right?
It's Friday.
At seven thirty, I think.
It is Friday.
It's Friday.
At sharp, right?
It's at sharp, yes.
Between all of us, we'll figure it out.
Okay, for some clarity, it's Friday.
It takes five of us to figure it out.
At sharp.
For the record, I gave you guys an opportunity to say it.
Okay, if all minds are clear, then I have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Meadows, second by Ms. Coggins, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries.